Allegiance. And I will leave that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, um, our next item of business, uh, let's just go ahead and, uh, set our agenda for the day.
Chairman, I make a motion that with the changes of the ten fifteen being canceled until we have more information on it. And the ten thirty, eleven thirty be combined. Those are the same thing. And the two fifteen and two forty-five being combined. Is that right?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so with those, uh-
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with those, uh, corrections. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, our agenda will be stand as, um, approved. All right, so our first item of business will be swearing in of our by our county clerk of the new elected officials.
Okay. Well, I'll do this at the same time.
What?
And I'll have you state your name as well, so. I, state your name.
Bill Cox.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support-
That I will support.
Obey-
Obey.
And defend-
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties-
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office-
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you. I'll have you sign. I'll get you a little sticky.
All right, um, we'll move right on to our ten thirty item, cause I see that, uh, Rob Johnson from Bear River Mental Health is here. How was your trip? Come on up.
It was great. It was great. The roads were really, really good.
Were they? Good.
Yeah. Glad you're not going.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Need to say my name?
Yes, and your name and who you represent is?
Rob Johnson from Bear River Mental Health. And, uh, there's a requirement in state code that the local mental health authority each year has a chance to receive the audit and have an interview with the, with the executive officers of the, whoever you've selected to provide the mental health services. So I'm here today to go over some highlights of the audit, answer any questions that you have, and fulfill that part of that code. And then at the end, we just need sign and data that you have had that opportunity to have that, the thing. So, I'll go through some highlights. First, I'll go through the written reports of the auditors. So on page five, this is the independent auditor's report, and in that second, that second paragraph on page two, page five. "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Bear River Mental Health Services, Inc. as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two and twenty-one, and the changes in its net assets and its cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So, what they're saying there is this is a clean audit. They didn't find anything. Uh, they've gone through all their stuff and they feel good about what they found. Bill was at the presentation and you can add anything you'd like, Bill. Now, if you'll turn to page twenty-five, this is another report that the auditors do, and it's on internal controls. And they don't really, they don't really go through the internal controls to, to, to actually offer an opinion. But they do say, right down at the bottom of that page twenty-five, in that last paragraph towards the end, it says, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be a, a material weak- weakness." And on the next page, at the, at the bottom of the first paragraph, "The results of our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the government auditing standards." Then on the next page, this is a letter that they put out to those charged with governance, so our board and the local authorities. And right down towards the bottom, it just, you know, just general statement, it says, "We did not identify any significant control deficiencies and other matters during our audit." And they go through a bunch of different things that if they find, they need to report, whether they had disagreements with management, whether management used other auditors. And, and they didn't find anything in our audit this year. If we go back to page nine, it's a statement of financial position or our balance sheet. I guess it's page eight, sorry. We'll go to page nine next. Page eight, we'll just talk about the balance sheet a little bit. So, um, you can see right up there at the top, cash was significantly up from the previous year. That's mainly from our net income. And then you can see there's just some timing issues with accounts receivable and stuff. But our total assets are up over three million dollars. And our net income was, um, over three million dollars this year. One thing I'd like to point out here is, under the liabilities and net assets, can you see the unexpendated county funds? That line, that eighty thousand four eight, four fifty-eight. Our, our years aren't the same. Your year's a calendar year, our year's a, is a state fiscal year. And so if you ever give us more money than we need for our twenty percent match, because state law says that the local authorities have to provide a twenty percent match of any of the state dollars that come in. If you ever provide us more, um, revenue in a year than we need for that match, we put it in here on our balance sheet as an unexpendated county in case there's ever a year where the legislature meets and gives us a big increase before you have a chance to do your budget. And Rich County's portion of that, eighty thousand, is a little over twelve thousand, twelve thousand one hundred and twenty. So you have more than a year of your budget in reserve. Then if we go to page nine, this is the income statement. I say this every year when I come and present, but if we think of our, if we think of our funding as an inverted pyramid, the county funds, the county funds are what support the rest of it. That four hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the three counties matches the state funding, brings in that three point five million. Excuse me. And then that money matches the Medicaid funds, the thirteen point eight million, which provides the majority of the funding for the services we provide. So that four hundred and seventy thousand allows us to draw down a little over eighteen million to provide services, services in the three county area. And, um, we really appreciate that the counties, you know, cash rich and box elder have always made their match and have never let state funds go back. And we've able to, been able to leverage good funds to provide good services here in the area. Um, you can see the federal dollars are up slightly, or, up over two thousand and twenty-two. We've received a, oh, thank you. We've received a, a few, um, new, um, federal grants, one to do some quick follow-up after hospitalization. Also some supported employment stuff. But the biggest issue was we got some, we got a little over a hundred thousand dollars for some retention pay for our staff. The biggest issue you can see is the net Medicaid. It went from about ten and a half million to over thirteen and a half million dollars. And the public health emergency and Medicaid expansion have been, have provided a lot of new revenue for, uh, the mental health system and substance abuse system in the state. And, uh, the, the, the big issue there is that, is that is pro, that will come down. In the year we're in, it is down, but the public health emergency, as long as we're in it, they can't drop people off the Medicaid rolls. And they were projecting that it would end in two thousand and twenty-two, which it didn't. And we also pay a lower match percentage to the feds during the public health emergency. So the bottom line there is we made three hun, three million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's eighteen point one percent of our revenue. That is in line with the rest of the mental health centers across the state. The other rural mental health centers that have all of the expansion Medicaid in there, Four Corners, percentage of profit was seventeen point seven, Central's was nineteen point seven, and Northeastern's was twenty-six point three. So we're kinda right there in the middle of those. Questions or, uh, concerns that you'd like to talk about?
What, I know we had this discussion in board meeting, but as, as, um, what do you think the timeline's gonna be as we reduce those funds from the emergency medical services?
So, I think, I think, Bill, so this year, this year we budgeted about, um, eleven million, so we're down quite a bit from even that. Also, part of this is from the previous year. The expansion side of this has a, it has a risk corridor built into it. And from six months of two thousand and twenty and for all of two thousand and twenty-one, three hu, about three hundred and fifty, or four hundred and fifty thousand of that is from a previous year. And it dropped right to the bottom line, so without that, we'd be under three million in net income without those previous year's risk factors. And I think from two thousand and twenty-two, I think we'll actually owe money back. But we didn't have the MLR done to make a projection, so I think we'll owe some of this money back. And we asked for significantly less Medicaid than we got in two thousand and twenty-two. And we just took it out of the actuary's hand and said we weren't able to spend it all. We'll ask for less. And going into next year, Bill, I think we'll ask something about what we asked for for two thousand and twenty-three, plus an inflationary increase. And we'll let them figure out the eligibilities, the eligibles, and how that works.
Works on the capitated, okay.
Yeah.
So on your Medicaid, I know people can't be dropped, um, is the increase because people can't be dropped and they're using it? Or is it just a lower match, or is it a combination?
It's, it's, they can't be dropped, and they set our rates thinking that the public health emergency would drop partway through this year. And they would stop, start dropping eligibles off the, off the thing and the revenues would go down. So, it's, it's just mainly based on eligibility and the match. We save about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in match each quarter. So as long as that public health emergency goes to another quarter, we save a hundred and fifty thousand.
So people are using it?
Yes.
And they are?
Yeah.
Typically, they'd be dropped off.
Right, mm-hmm. And then once the public health emergency ends, the state has one year to go through all of the eligible, pe, eligible, Medicaid eligibles and drop them off if they don't still meet. But they're limited, they can't do it all upfront. The feds have said it has to go. You can't, you can't review more than ten percent of the eligibles in any given month. So it'll take at least ten months to review them and go through. And maybe up to a year. I think the state feels like the public health emergency will end in April, so they would start dropping eligibles in May.
They just pick random groups?
I don't, they're gonna try and do it, I've heard the people at the health department talk about it, the Medicaid people, and they're gonna try and hit the, who they think are the group that had, would be dropped the most off first. And then they will just go through over a year and review the eligibility of everyone.
Um, as far as the legislature goes, um, what are we looking for as far as the broad grant goes this year?
I think that we're not, I don't think we think we'll get a bunch of extra funding in our normal stuff. But I think that, uh, Senator Wilson is pushing pretty hard for money for a receiving center in our area. And I don't know whether that will be funded or not. I think people feel pretty good about it right now, but, you know, probably a lot of that depends on what happens with the economy between now and the end of the session.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Bear River Mental Health appreciates Ritz County's support.
Yeah, it's been a good program. Appreciate the, the work.
Lots of people from over here going over there?
No, we do, we do quite a bit of services over here. We send someone over once a week, and I think, I think part of rural, a rural community, we do have people that drive the canyon.
So do you, uh, do they stay mostly there in Garden City, or do they come to the school here?
Come to the school too.
Yeah, both ways. Yeah, there's, uh, and, and we, you know, we, we have looked at, of actually increasing a, a, a day or a half a day or, or more if we need to, um. There's pretty, they're, they're seeing quite a few clients in the school, let me just put it that way. And some of those, you know, um, the situation is, is they're seeing a student and then they'll be meeting with the parents in one of the other, either the health department building down here or the one over in Garden City, so. Or, or at the school, but it just kind of all depends on how that all works out, but they're trying to make that a situation where they can meet with the student and just, and the parents and and have, um, a total wraparound service there. All right, so, we need a motion that, um, the financial statements for Bear River Mental Health Services has been presented to us.
Go move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is announced. We all need to sign, so we, and date that, please, Commissioner. We're in there, though. Oh my goodness, is it the third already?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Of twenty-three. That's what I forget.
You bow. And, um, we have our contract, um, for Bear River Mental Health Services that we need to include in. We didn't include it in the motion, but we need to sign our contract for them to continue to provide services for us.
So you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, uh, sign this contract for mental health services at Bear River Mental Health. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed. All right, I will find the little sign here, sticky note, and then get it signed. Do you, do you wanna copy this too, Annalisa?
Um, please, yes. With the signature?
Yeah.
I, do I need to attest on that, I think?
Yes. And after that's signed on our side, we'll send a fully executed copy back too.
Oh, perfect, so. I made one change on the one that she signed. I just changed, fixed the name.
All right. You wanna get a copy of that?
So I'll give you this.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thanks for keeping him coming, he ain't coming over. Keep him awake going home.
We'll go support the local economy now.
Oh, yeah? You gonna go, you gonna go stop and go skiing on your way home?
It's not about going so shit.
Yeah. I just go lunch in Garden City.
All right. Well, we're moving right along, we're about thirty minutes ahead. Um, Buck?
Sorry about that.
We'd rather be ahead than behind.
All right, looks like, um, so the Utah Association of Counties, um, on their Board of Directors, um, has a, uh, member from each of the counties, and so that has to be, uh, the, that, that board member has to be appointed by the commission for that, and, uh, and you serve for a year on the Board of Directors. They have four meetings a year, there's one in January, that'd be one in April, um, one in, uh, September, and then also one in November, and then occasionally they will, um, have an emergency board member, their board meeting during, um, the legislative session if something, uh, arises. So there's a minimum of about four meetings a year. Most of them are in conjunction with conferences. Um, other than the one in January where it is, uh, well, it's kind of in conjunction with the legislature, but the rest of them are usually held, uh, when we get together for conferences, the spring conference, um, the fall commissioners conference, and the annual conference, so with that, we need to appoint a board member. I've been on it for a couple of years, um, and, uh-
I wouldn't mind doing it if the commission so desired, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to support Sam.
Okay.
Taking a turn on it.
Why don't you make the motion, and John?
I'll make a motion that we have, uh, we point Sam to the UAC board for Rich County for this year.
Okay. I'll second that motion. I'll step down and second that motion, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Annalisa, would you notify UAC then that Sam will be the, uh, board member?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
This thing's lighting on. Annalisa?
What's that?
Lighting on in this one. How do you turn that on? Get it on? The red light usually is on.
Is the other one still working?
Yeah.
It's on.
Battery dead?
Thought we need to, but.
Wow.
Okay, looks like it's still recording.
I'll have the lights on, there we go.
All right, um. Annalisa, why don't you talk a little bit about the, uh, the legislative report, the audit report that went on during the, uh, elections of the primary elections? Think this, this is more just of an informational item, is that right?
Okay, uh, first of all, I, um, this came up because Ricky Hatch, sorry, this is Annalisa Peir, um, county clerk, auditor. Um, Ricky Hatch is the, uh, county clerk for Weber County. Um, sent us some links to the full report of the, um, Legislative Audit Co, Audit Committee, which looked at the primary election results. Um, so if you, any of you want, I can forward you the actual email with the links. And anybody who wants to have this information can request a copy of it. Uh, but I'll just kinda go over the, the summary, fi, the key findings, um, at the request of, uh, the, this Ricky Hatch, so. Um, so what they found was the election controls, uh, that Utah has in place, um, mitigate the risk of fraud as long as they're used properly. Um, any mistakes within the voter registration database highlight opportunities for increased oversight. Um, the canvas ballot totals from Utah's twenty twenty-two primary election did not match those recorded in the central voter database. Um, some counties' chain of custody practices make it difficult to count for all ballots. Uh, Utah lacks clear legal standards for election signature verification. So they're finding some recommendations that they can make as well. So adopting additional post-election audit methods could increase confidence in election processing and outcomes. Um, and finally, Utah Election Code does not specify oversight and enforcement roles. So they've, they've come up with a list of recommendations, but overall, um, the official report language said, "Our audit team observed and tested election systems in every county during the twenty twenty-two primary election and found no evidence of systematic, system, how do you say that word, systemic, systematic problems, widespread errors, or significant fraud." Um, this is because, but this is primarily because multiple layers of process and defense must be defeated to undermine election integrity in Utah. Although we believe elections are functioning well overall, there are several risk areas discussed throughout this report that provide opportunities to strengthen Utah's election system in important ways.
So, was some of these, um, things that they identified, were they not already corrected? Some of them were actually corrected for the general election, right?
I believe this is, this is, uh-
Cause this audit was on the primary, is that, am I getting, am I thinking about that right? My understanding is the audit- My understanding is the audit was still conducting on the primary.
Uh, primary, yep, and many of the recommendation, recommendations were already partially or fully implemented for the twenty twenty-two general election, that's correct.
Okay, okay, good.
I'm glad you pointed that out.
So, do we have a map once in here?
I think so, with this one, this one's working.
Do you need batteries?
I'm gonna get it charged. I thought they were all charged up. This one's looking okay, so. Get rid of that one.
Oh, so they have a, a charge pool.
So is this something that is done every election?
No, it's not, um. I mean, they do, they do sample, this was a full-blown audit for the integrity of the elections because of.
So what was the difference in this and what John did? When he came in and they can pull some random, some.
I think that was part of the corrections that they did.
Oh, when, oh, when he canvassed the votes, yeah. Well, they come and observed what was going on and, and the chain of, of events that took place from a person when they registered to when they voted, to when the, the actual votes were tallied, to, um, the signature verification, they had people standing right here watching the whole process all day long, um, as they.
During the voting day?
Yes, yes. And, um, so, and then for some of those that, um, you know, the bigger counties that didn't get them all scanned the very first day, or those kind of things, I mean, the chain of the ballot from the time that, the back of it's tore off and the signature scanned, to it being opened, to being run through the scanner, to do the votes, tally, tabulating, um, those type of things, and they were just watching that chain of command to make sure that there wasn't places where people could say votes weren't counted correctly, or, uh, votes were added, or subtracted, or those kind of things. I, I, that's pretty much what the audit was, and, and no, they don't do it, a, a full-blown audit like that.
Every time.
Every time, they had somebody representing the Lieutenant Governor's Office in every county.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, great. Um, Bryce probably won't be here for another thirty minutes, so, um, looks like, uh, the next item on the agenda will be the Commission assignments. So, um, I think you all have a list of what our assignments are, so, um, as we look at them, I know, John, you probably want to make some changes, what's your desire?
Uh, so this is just how we were last year?
Um, yep. I have some suggestions.
Yeah, I, why don't you go ahead by look through this?
Okay. Um, I think maybe the best thing would be for, as far as tourism, um, why don't I trade TV for tourism with you, John?
You want to do tourism?
Yeah, I'll do tourism.
Okay, I, I just got put on that tourism board for the state.
Well, but that's entirely different than our, than our.
Okay.
Berlin Convention.
What would I do with, what would I do with the TV?
Well, the TV, so, we have six stations, um, that we're transmitting, they're, it's free TV, um, it's transmitted by UHF, we also have some radio stations. The majority of those are done with Cache Valley Radio Group, and when we have television issues, um, we just need to make sure that an IT person, um, addresses those issues and gets TV back on. Usually, um, we get notified if we have TV issues by, um, actually Bear Lake County, the, the Coons outfit down in Bear Lake County, because they pick up our signal and put it in a cable, and so they know when our, when our, ours are off. It's not a, it's not a big deal, um, other than, you know, during the, uh, we just need to make sure that the propane tank gets filled for, um, the backup generator, and, um, that during the summer, if it gets really, really hot, sometimes we have issues with air conditioners that, um, well, it gets so hot in the buildings with all the IT stuff in there that it shuts it all down because of overheating, so it's, those need to be addressed with either, last year we had to put a new air conditioner in the one on Lake Town Peak. Um, but they're there and they're part of our, also, part of that is where the, um, radio equipment for our repeaters, um, both Lake Town and Randolph repeaters for the Sheriff's Office, those are, our house in those buildings as well. Um, so, it's not, not a big deal, but I just wondered about, I mean, I can certainly continue to do it, it's not, the biggest thing is, is when I know the TV's off, I usually give our, uh, tech guy a call and say, you know, um, the biggest thing is, he's gonna want to know where it's off, is it off here in Randolph? Cause our signal's transferred from here in Randolph or the Crawford, um, over to Lake Town and then, and then transmitted, so if Randolph's off, Lake Town's off. If we lose signal in Lake Town, we need to know whether the signal's off in Lake Town, or if it's actually off here in Randolph, so, um.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm happy to do it, I, I'm curious why you want tourism, why you'd want to take over tourism?
Um, I think with the Tourism Director, it might be better fit if I take it over, um.
So Tammy's requesting that you take over tourism?
No, she didn't request it, no.
Alright.
I had called, somebody said that, once in a while that the TV's kind of been on and off, and he was nervous that he wouldn't get to see the U of U game Monday. He wanted to make, wanted to make sure it was on, and I just says, well, well, I'll talk Wednesday, we'll talk about it here, and.
So.
I haven't, that's the only thing I've heard that it's on and off, but.
Well, and, and the problem, so it comes from Rex Peak, which is cleared down by Coville to, to Crawford, from Crawford to Lake Town.
Yeah.
So it can be down the line quite a ways before we even, uh, you know, that's, that's the problem.
Might not even be in our area.
No, that's, that's the issue, so, um, there's a couple of people in Woodruff that still has the TV, and they, you know, I, I can talk to them and say what channels are off and find out immediately if there's, we've got signals in Randolph.
He's just afraid he might miss the game.
So, is that somebody in Lake Town?
Yeah.
So they're still on the UHF TV then?
I don't think anybody does anymore, but apparently they are.
Okay. Well, anything helps, I mean, I, you know, whatever, I mean, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you think that the county will function better making those things changes, um.
I think you're our IT guy.
Yeah, but I'm very much interested in, in tourism, but that doesn't mean, just because the check is under Bill's name that I can't be involved in tourism.
No, absolutely not.
So, I'm not, I'm not super.
Everything is still at the Commission.
Yeah, but I, I do, I get what you're saying with the television, and I understand the back halls and the tracking down where the problems are, you know? I'd like to actually go visit those facilities when it's summertime.
Well, I was, that was my other point is, is.
I see unions up there, either all night, or they were unloading yes- last, yesterday afternoon.
At the runaway truck, yeah.
And they're still there today.
Yeah.
They were up there all night.
There's, you know, it'd be good if, you know, and maybe that's something we all three ought to go and, and visit both those sites, because they're, they're pretty strategic in, you know, the, the, the TV is one thing, and of course, the radio stations are another story. Um, if there, if there's radio issues, Cache Valley Radio Group comes over and they address their issues in, in Bear Lake. Um, but the other issue is, is, you know, they're strategic to our, to our radio system for, you know, the, our emergency system, our pagers, and our, and our Sheriff's Department of Public Safety, and those kind of things, so, you know, they're, um, they're, they're kind of one of those things that we never really pay much attention to till they don't work, and then, and then it's kind of like, what's going on, and it's kind of like, ooh, and, and I had to kind of laugh, cause, uh, the sheriff talked to me about a guy that, he wanted to go up and look, and they're, they're gonna put some new radios in, so, um, they wanted to go up and see what was up there, and what, uh, space there was, and, and what the facilities looked like, and Dale called me a couple of times, and he goes, I don't think I'm on the right road.
Oh, whatever.
It's, the one on the Crawford is where you have to go around the back, and it's, it's quite a trip. And we had issues on the one on Lake Town four years ago, when we had that big wind, and it took all the towers down and everything, it was quite the deal.
Sim, do, do you see any changes you'd like to make?
Um, I, there's some work done, could be done in Meadowville, and then I haven't really had the time, or if you wanted.
You're talking about their water system?
Yeah. But it's, I mean, it's up to you.
That's gonna be pricey for very few people, right?
Yeah.
Is, is there ever gonna be growth that way from behind that mountain, from Garden City's?
Well, the water is the, probably one of the deterrents of it all.
Yeah, I could take that over if you want me to. Be a good chance to.
I think there's some money that could be gathered in for something like that. But I am not the guy to write grants and go after it. It's not my cup of tea.
One thing that's not listed on here is the econ development, do you want to stick, stay on that?
I wouldn't mind it, yeah.
Good.
We have some changes we need, I think we need to make with that.
Yeah.
Some new rules and new stuff that's come out.
Amendment by laws, yeah.
I think there's gonna be some state legislation as well. Speaking of that first Outdoor Venture Commission meeting, I went to, they gave me, I'll, I'll give you guys a copy, but they gave me a list of all the pools of money that, our grants that counties can, and cities can pull from, basically like a comprehensive list of Mitch or, or us, where we could, uh, get money for trails, or basically anything tourism-related. Um, and they'll have a report ready this summer that basically lists all the assets that the state has as far as, uh, recreation and outdoor adventure, which would be kind of cool to see, um, and then they're gonna take that and supplement it with how can we build this out to continue to grow, uh, recreation in Utah.
Is that the, the Utah State University study that, that did the report, the comprehensive report?
Yeah. Yeah. So it'll be done in, uh, this summer.
So it's something that need, needs to be added to this list?
No.
No, that's a state thing.
Yeah, it's a state appointment. John represents the, the, uh, Utah Association of Counties on that, so it was appointed by, he was, he was appointed by the Association.
It's cool, there's a bunch of money that they've been putting into an account that doesn't have any rules on it yet, and they're hoping to, to put some rules on that and have the Commission start giving that money out, but it'll all happen during this legislative session.
Yeah, it's fairly new, it's like two years old, I think.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of money in there, too.
I think one of their very first things was to do a, an inventory of what, what was, what the state has and what it doesn't have, and.
So that'd be with something that you have to apply and be ranked, numbered, right, to get it, to get it.
Yeah. Luckily, almost everything that, that Rich County's done in the past ranks pretty dang high because of our second homes in our recreation community.
Okay, so you're still okay with public lands and CRM, I guess, I know you're right in the middle of that, so.
I probably have dropped the ball with the weed committee. Somebody wanted to, we're, we need to have that county-wide committee, what's it called, board, committee?
Yeah, Weed Board.
Yeah, I don't know when that's been.
We haven't had, they haven't had a meeting for a couple of years, I'm sure. Um, Norm was kind of over that, and he, he kind of ramrodded that bill.
Do you want me to do that? I happen to be out and about and see, I'm kind of like Bill and you, I, I see where tons of the weeds are.
Yeah, you want that?
Sure.
One thing that needs to be done that I should have done that I did not do was what, like Bill just said, was we need to get our, the board together once, at least once a year, huh, annually?
Yeah, I usually try to do it in the spring and in the fall, and in the fall, identify, um, things that you want to do for the next year, in other words, get ready for grants, and in the spring, identify areas of, uh, concern that, you know, you want the weed department to focus on, you know, and there's a couple of, of workdays when they have, you know, they get with other, you know, there's other weed agencies that come, you know, and sometimes they'll have thirty people out spraying, and the Weed Board kind of decides what those focuses are, and helps and backs up TJ, and those kind of things, so that, that probably ought to get up and, and we probably ought to look and see who's been on it.
That's what I'm saying, see who's died, and.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, um, usually when they have a Weed Board meeting, usually the clerk just was the secretary for that, and so there was minutes for, for that.
Yeah, I can do that.
So Annalisa would need to be to that meeting, too?
Um, yeah, we just need to have a record of the, of, of the minutes and the, and those kind of things, TJ can keep them. TJ actually, he's not on the Weed Board, he's just a supervisor, so, you, you know, you as a Commissioner, the Commissioner usually is the Chairman of the Board, and you have four other people, um, it's usually from three to five, and I believe that one had five, so there was the, there was the Commissioner and four other people.
One for each community.
Yeah, that's kind of how they, they did it, one for each community, so.
So, sorry, who was taking over that one?
John. I guess we'll be talking about that a little bit with, uh, public caring.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just happy to serve.
Would you start up with the public caring?
Well, uh, the Weed's Board coming up, I'm sure it'll mention the Weed Board.
And I'm not sure, this list shows me over the fair, and that's, that is Sim. I don't know why it's on there like that, but Sim's been over the fair, so.
No, okay.
You keep admit, out of trouble?
My best. Trying to keep them all straight and narrow.
Kind of a full-time job, isn't it?
Kind of a full-time job, isn't it?
Sometimes.
That's a good answer.
Yeah, no, but with what's going on in DC right now, you know, it's. It's a crazy mess right now.
Hey, so as we look at that, is there any other changes you wanna make? That gives me six items, Sim seven and John seven. I just didn't say, yeah, well, items, whatever, whatever you wanna call them.
So Sim actually has eight because of the economic development that you have to be out of?
Oh, yeah.
Sim, you have the senior center? I thought that was Bill.
Well. Where he's. What are you, the director? One of us needs to be over it. To do all the legal and signing and the.
Right.
And I am on the aging advisory board with Bragg.
Yeah, I think it's working fine how it is now.
Okay. Well, let's go another year and see how things go.
Yeah, I do like this discussion in in January, so I think. Still fifteen minutes ahead of schedule.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to take action on it. It's just a matter of going over. And reviewing our commission portfolio as they call it.
You probably will wanna post this online, Annalisa, cuz I do think people reference this when they make phone calls.
Bryce, come on up.
Oh, great. How you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Get all sworn in and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Crazy for another four years and that kinda stuff.
How's it going?
Louis Chandler.
This is uh Louis Chandler.
Chris, Bill, Bill Cox, I speak.
John Lee.
John, I speak.
He's uh the new executive director of Bear Lake Watch. David and Claudia, if you're well aware, you know Bear Lake Watch all three of you, don't you? Anyway, David and Claudia, which have had the rains up there for years and years and years, just recently said they've had enough. And uh they wanted to go do other things. I think there's some medical issues with Claudia. Uh, with her arm and stuff like that. But anyway, they've basically operated it uh as a couple. For the last, uh, I don't know, how many years? Twenty years?
At least twenty years.
At least twenty, yeah, yeah. And uh so uh they wanted out, sort of out. What they've done is uh. Claudia is still gonna be remaining as sort of the liaison between the uh Bear Lake Watch and the uh. The legislators in both Utah and Idaho. And uh, you know, when I was on the commission here and stuff, we never did really do much with Bear Lake Watch. And I always detected that there may have been some, not friction, but sort of a, you know. Difficulty between Bear Lake Watch and uh the Bear Lake Regional Commission. And so I sort of wanted to get that so we can get past that. What do you think, Bill, as far as legislative work and stuff? Have you found, I'd I'd like your real uh. Your real response to Claudia getting your way down there when you guys are down there? Or do you even see her or what?
You know, there was a couple of years where they were um involved in some legislation that was going on um. And uh. As as they worked through the process, it was like, here's this legislation that dealt with Bear Lake, but they didn't have any conversation with us until. It went into committee. And uh. Once it went into committee, then the discussion opened up as to um. Well, you guys have wrote legislation, but we are not on board as a county with this legislation. And uh. It as it as it worked through the whole process, um, and it was it was just basically um. Declaring Bear Lake a scenic lake, so to speak, and uh wanted to protect the lake, but it went a little bit further than. Uh, we felt like that the legislation went a lot further than, you know, there was no industry, there was no. And it was kinda like, I think you're going into an area here that we don't wanna tie our hands with. We certainly wanna protect the lake, but you're going into an area that. You're gonna pass legislation that that basically may take some things off the table that. We are not comfortable taking off the table. But after that year, um, really haven't had a whole lot of interaction with Claudia and Dave on anything really. Um, as far as what legislation and what they've been talking to legislators about.
Well, you know, they've been pushing recently this uh getting Bear Lake uh sort of the same uh. Recognition as the Great Salt Lake and that kinda of stuff. And I don't know where they're at on that one specifically. But I just wanna make sure that we don't step on you guys' feet or the commissioners in Idaho. Because we're not a political organization. We're an organization that, and I've been on it for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. Basically in the biology part and uh but uh on the executive board. But we don't wanna get into a position where we're bothering you guys and if we can work together, that sure would be good too. So I'm gonna let Louis here tell you guys a bit about himself and some of the ideas he has for Bear Lake Watch and. Certainly you'll field any questions and stuff that you have.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate your comments there about the legislation and she will, she is going to stay active with the legislators. Um, let me do that. I'll introduce myself, but the question I wanna come back to is what, from your perspective as county commissioners? What what role would you like Bear Lake Watch to play? With Rich County? And uh and how do we, how do how do we do that and make sure that, uh, I guess what are the needs that we can help? As as related to Bear Lake and what can Bear Lake Watch do? So I um, I was in healthcare administration. I had had a company that had nursing homes in Idaho and California. And uh ran those for a number of years and then my business partner and I sold out of that about three years ago. And uh we were office in Pocatello, had a had a cabin there at the lake for a long time and then. Uh, well, not a real long time, but you know, for a while, but we had been coming to the Bear Lake as a family and love Bear Lake and that's that's where. That love comes from. So we sold our home in Pocatello when the market was so good and uh came and moved here full-time um in August of twenty-one. And uh I'm enjoying full, living there full-time. It's great. So I joined the board of Bear Lake Watch. And then this uh David and Claudia announced that they were going to retire. And uh so we made this switch here and so far it's been good and I'm learning quite a bit. I don't have. Any uh expertise as far as like Bryce has with the biology of the lake and those kinds of things, but. Um, as far as working with with county entities and local entities and and legislators, that was my end whole career. With with healthcare anyway, was, I mean, Boise quite a bit with the state legislators there and all on a healthcare related basis. But that's something that, this isn't new to me that way. Um, it is that the subject matters, you know. But I'm learning that and uh and getting deep involved in that. One thing that I found being very candid, and I appreciate how candid Bryce has been in your answer, is um. There's a real need for grassroots level. Understanding and I guess marketing, for lack of a better term, of Bear Lake Watch. I'm finding that as I met with with uh Bear Lake County Commissioners in um Paris. I'm going to the Montpelier um city council meeting this evening, meet with them and then I've met with the um. Chamber of Commerce in Garden City and I'm on schedule to meet with the 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 Garden City.
Town council, yeah.
Town council, yeah. And what I'm finding is I meet with also with different players in the community, that there's there's sometimes. A real blur between between what is, as executive director, what is my my personal feelings? What is my personal desires for the lake, my personal. Versus what is really representing Bear Lake? And am I representing Bear Lake or am I representing Louis Chandler in my case? And and I've been advised that you have to be really careful with that. I'm sure you come across that as a county, as a commissioner. Yeah? And um, one one person put it, he said, when you are representing Bear Lake Watch, you are Bear Lake. You're no longer Louis Chandler, you are Bear Lake and I love that. In fact, I think we're gonna kinda use that as a little mantra or tag. You might see some T-shirts or something that says, I am Bear Lake. Cuz I just, I really like that, that we do represent lake, we give a voice to the lake. So obviously you're familiar with with what Bear Lake Watch does. You look very familiar to me. Have we met? Are there any commission meetings or something?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Okay, I don't look familiar to you.
All the Westmans look alike.
So so have you been to the Bear Lake Regional Commission?
Yes.
So he he's on the Bear Lake Regional.
Oh, that's where, okay, that's where, yes. Yeah, okay. I I've been out there in the gallery. So, yeah. Um, anyway, so.
So where do you live, Louis? Where?
Fish Haven.
In Fish Haven, huh?
Yeah, yeah, Bear Lake West.
Sorry you live in Idaho, but that's okay. It's all good.
Yeah, I'm mad of a boy.
And I think that Bear Lake Regional Commission is your grassroots that you're talking about for Bear Lake. Cuz. Most of us that are on the Bear Lake Regional Commission have been there pretty well all our lives and. And we take it personal that we wanna keep that lake pristine in the way it is.
I appreciate that. So are, how do you feel that that uh Bear Lake Watch is, what's our relationship on that commission? Do you feel like it's?
We're very open to Dave and Claudia come in and express, you know, their opinions on things and we, they, we have different. Uh. Agencies come and present, you know, the fishing game, the fish people come often and different things of that's happening around there and. And we welcome you guys and your opinions, you know, all the time.
It feels like it's that they're well received. I that's when I've attended those with David and Claudia.
Yeah.
So that's good. Okay, so when you say that the grassroots, are what, can you think of anything specifically that we can do better to reach the the commission members?
Uh, I don't know. I've never really. Thought about it too in depth, um. Like I say, we, as we get the different entities and the different meetings we have, and they come, you know, not every time, but often. And uh they're real good to give us their opinion and, you know, and speak up and that's that's all we can ask, yeah.
Good, okay. Okay, I appreciate that. What are hot button items for Rich County that having to do with the the lake that we might be able to be involved with or?
Well, if you could get the water up, that would be, you know, the water level.
Notice that since I've come on board, the snowpack is higher.
We will, we will hold you to that.
Yeah. We'll see. So, oh no.
You know, and and that and that's the thing, you know, there's so many factors that um are not controllable, you know, I mean. When the water's down, we have, you know, we have exposed beaches and and that creates issues with. All kinds of different things between people and vehicles and and um, you know, camping and and uh. You know, just all those kinda things that that we are all concerned about, you know, and and we. Anytime you put, you know, two hundred and fifty vehicles down a hundred feet from the water, you know, what are we, what are we doing? Hopefully, nothing. You know, and so there's always a concern about about that. That engineering is going on right now and so there'll be some things going on there where. Um, you know, we're gonna have to minimize any impacts on the lake, but the 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 bike path between. The the distance between the high water mark and the road is is pretty limited there and so that'll be. We're working on that as we as we move through that to make sure that we we impact the lake the very le- the least we. You know, the the least impact on the lake there possible as we move that through. Um. I don't know how that's all gonna go. Um, we've got the funding and uh we've got the go-ahead and we're moving along with that process, so.
Yeah, just don't put it where Bear Lake eats it because we all know that the lake has no brain when it comes to that. And it'll take it away as fast as to put the fill in.
Yeah, yeah, we've. I don't know how we'll do that. I don't know. We we'll have to look at that. There's four or five real critical places there that we've got some, got some things to deal with, so. Anyway, that's one of the things that's going on that's uh, that, you know, I mean, that affects the lake. Um, but we wanna make sure that we're doing that right and has the least impact upon any water quality or the lake itself or any fish habitat or anything like that, so. All those things will be looked at. You know, one of the things that might be very helpful, um, Louis, is is as you as a group. Um, are focusing on things that, you know, um, when you talk about grassroots things. Those items that you feel are important to come to the regional commission with them and 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 um, you know, uh, present your. Uh. Your efforts and your priorities and those kinda things to the regional commission, so, you know, they have an idea of the things that you're working on. Um, or looking at or um concerned about and 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 I think for the most part. You know, Claudia and Dave have have expressed those, but as you move through this process of establishing. Some grassroots efforts and your priorities and those kinda things, keep the regional commission in the loop with uh, you know, I mean, they're. They're certainly your ally, not your adversary.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it'd be a good reason to, you know, tend to are on it, but that's one that they have been spending a lot of time. Louis has spent some time on it, but what do you think about it, Louis?
I just to give you an update, we we just registered, um. It did a filing and it made it to the, on their report that goes back to FERC, our our little. Um, filing that made it back to that, so that's that was good and it was about suggesting that they um make a smaller footprint on the lower dam. And uh by going deeper. And so then the the burn that goes around won't have to be so high and unsightly. And it won't be such a large footprint as far as the lake goes. They had three different, uh, you're probably aware of it, they had three different proposals for a lower dam. None of them are ideal, um, but like you say, Bryce, it's a real balancing act of where do we. Where do we get involved, where do we not get involved? When, where do we become a flying the ointment and not? And so really, we're just trying to make sure it's something that that protects the lake from the sediment coming up and and uh ruining the lake that way. Affecting it that way and then also the the visual effects of it. And um, so they, anyway, that our our um. Uh, submission, they're made it to to in in their document as a as an action item that they'll they'll come back and answer and consider going down lower. The worry with that is the seismic activity. What will that do? You know, where the fault line is right there and that's that's a real worry as well.
See, that's one of the real problems that we've had in the past, at least I've had in the past and I'm, you guys know me well enough, you know, I'm pretty confrontational and. And have my own thoughts, but it's the past that see, I was unaware that this has even occurred. So David and Claudia in the past have done a lot of stuff that has come off as Bear Lake Watch stuff. It's really never been passed the board. And I think in my last meeting, I made it clear that I was totally opposed to it. I see no reason at all to even have it. Let alone work with them to try to make it work. If it was up to me, I'd say, you know, no, this isn't gonna work mainly due to the other items that they've talked about. But yet then they go ahead and do this and uh. So it's like we're already in on it and we're already. Sort of saying, well, we might work with you and I'm not sure. Now, what do you think the board would feel on that? I mean, you remember me saying that, don't you?
I do.
And, uh, but we need to have some more consensus and better coordination between the board members. Cause we are an active board and, uh, the re- or the, and Louis because. You know, emails are not hard to send out and you should be able to keep us aware of what's going on. But, uh, the previous executive directors have made a lot of decisions on their own and that kind of stuff. But, uh, anyway, that's a good example of one of the problems that I face. As a board member on Bear Lake Regional, or on Bear Lake Watch, so. What's your feelings on Marina situation? Have you heard anymore?
Haven't, they're just trying to get through the, the permit process right now, um, looking at, you know, um.
Haven't they selected a site for doing?
No, well, yes and no, um, they went through the open house and, uh, had the. They had three different proposals there that they discussed, I guess. Did you go to the open house? Okay. So at that point in time, um, based on the information they got from that. Um, now they've gotta go back to the core and have, and it basically decide that this is where they're gonna do it, which is the best site. And then apply, make, apply for those permits through the core.
Right.
Um, with, um, the site being selected. Now at my, my idea, or excuse me, my understanding at this point in time. Is that they've pretty much come up with the fact that the best site is the, the site that. Is the original site to the south of the, of the existing Marina, but, uh, I'm not sure where we're at on that.
Yeah, I agree. That's probably either there or on the other side. Big issue there obviously is parking. And it depends because some of the previous ones had it going out a lot further, filled a lot further, so there was more, uh. Places to park and stuff.
Yeah.
But I don't really know for sure, uh.
Good year to do it, I think. If they can get a shovel ready, cause it's late, low.
Yeah, you watch. This happened before, when they had it, it was nice and low. We had it all set up with Lyle, Lyle Hillard and then Mary Tulias got in the middle of it and I was in the middle of it. And, uh, Lyle got ticked off and said, he was gonna give him six million dollars. And the whole issue was just build the shell around it. Don't worry about all the guts and everything and it's the. But while it's low and you can do it, build the shell around it. Well, we're at that point right now, but what's gonna happen is the lake will surely come up now. And that's gonna complicate things all the worse, so, I don't know.
Help comes up.
No, it is, it will, you know. This reminds me a lot of, uh, what was it, nineteen ninety seven? When we had the flood in here and so. As emergency manager, I'm gonna try to prepare for that a bit better than we did the last time. Not that I can, but anything. So.
Well, good. What else do you have to tell us?
I appreciate your time and I, uh, uh, do you, yeah, you too, thinking, I, I look forward to getting to know you and working with you more. Um, any questions that you have for me, any ideas, suggestions? Appreciate what you say.
No, I, I think it's a great organization. We just need to, you know, um, just make sure we're all working on the same page and.
Yeah.
You know, keep everybody in the loop of what's going on.
So how can we keep people in the loop? I mean, is it gotta be through emails or what's it gotta be? I mean, do we need to, uh. When we get on to something, like I said, we're, it's really hard for me to say right now, cause I don't know how Louis is gonna evolve. What he's gonna end up doing, how much stuff is still gonna be done by David and Claudia.
Well, I, I think, I think really, your, your contact point probably ought to be through the Regional Commission.
I think so too.
Because you've got, you've got commissioners on, from both counties on that, on the Regional Commission and as you're working on things. They're, they're the, they're the voice of the county to the legislature. And they need to be understanding what you guys are working on so that they can, you, you know, be, so that. When we say keep us in the loop, I think the bottom line is, is you keep the Regional Commission in the loop of what you're working on, so that. The commissioners in both walks of, uh, Bear Lake County and Rich County have an idea of what, what you're working on as they are talked. Cause the very first phone call is gonna come from the legislature of both states is they're gonna call the county commissioner and say. What's this, you know, anything about that just going on, you know? Claudia Carlisle's talked to me about this from Bear Lake Watch. What do you know about it? And if, and if my answer is, or Sim's answer is, have no idea, we haven't talked about it. No, we don't agree with that, or yes, we think it's a good concept, we have no way to support one way or the other if it's a good thing or not. So.
Yeah.
That's, that's the thing. I don't wanna, I don't wanna see a piece of legislation handed to me and say, what do you think about this? When I'm at the legislature that deals with Bear Lake, that, you know, it's.
Blindside.
Yeah, yeah, and it's kinda like, wait a minute here, you know, so, um. And there was some adversarial, I'll, I'll just say right up front, there was some adversarial things going on there with, with Claudia and, uh. Particularly with Claudia because she was, she was trying to do some backdoors things with some legislation and. It was like, we haven't even discussed that as a commission. We do not support that concept and we need to have more discussion about it and, uh. It, it, it created a little friction, it did, but we got through it.
I appreciate you being candid there.
Yeah, I think that's a real good idea and I think everything the bill says is correct. Because they do, I sat on the Regional Commission for some years when I was mayor and county commissioner, but. Yeah, and they do, do that, but that'll be your best way to go. To get influen- or get the information that Bear Lake Watch is doing and working on, especially in legislative issues. Or anything for that matter, out to the rest of the elected officials in the two counties, so.
And you, you're the chair?
Yeah, well, till this meeting this month, uh, the Bear Lake County and Rich County switch every other year.
Oh, I see, okay.
So who's the new commissioners in Bear Lake County now? I don't.
Oh, Brad Jensen's on the Bear Lake Regional Commission.
I don't know who the two are.
He didn't change.
Yeah. So the two new ones probably won't be on the Regional Commission, but I don't know who they are.
Yeah. Well, anything else?
I don't have anything. Thank you. And I will, I'll make sure that we're, we're in touch through the commission. And no blindsiding, I've written that down. Don't blindside me. So that will not happen?
Well, I've got your ear. I need to ask you a question on the budget. Did you, what did you wanna do on those, uh, signs? Remember I talked about? You'd have to come up with fifty percent if you budget forgot or should we? So I can go ahead and proceed on that. Work with the sheriff's office to do it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's get them, at least get one bought anyway, and two if we can.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's in your budget.
Okay.
So.
Now, Elise, will you send me or email me a copy of that budget so I can. Check it out, see what these guys have done with me?
The line items?
Uh, yeah, for line items for emergency management and that kind of stuff. By the way, I am Bryce, I've yet to meet you.
I'm Adelisa.
And you're, uh, being bathed in fire right now, I imagine, huh?
Well, I know what, what questions I need to ask next time so that I know what the item is about that's on the agenda and how long it is.
Exactly. Okay, unless you have any other questions for us, we'll give it back to you.
Okay, thanks for coming over. It's good to meet you. Appreciate it.
You're awesome, we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Thanks. We'll see ya. Thank you.
Is the, is the lake frozen over yet?
No.
Chandler, come up and, we've got a few minutes, come up and give us a.
I was gonna say, we gotta get him on, uh.
Come up and fill it, fill us in.
I did that one thing I need to tell. So, I don't know if you guys have seen this, but the SBA, do I need to do my name?
Yeah, yeah.
Chandler Beutler with Senator Romney's office. Um, with the drought over the summer, the, um, SBAs extended their, uh, low interest loans for small businesses affected by the drought. So, um, it's specifically for any non-agricultural small businesses that are affected through the drought, so. Rich County is one of the designated counties, so I don't know if there's, you know. I mean, if the rental companies are, you know, could qualify for some of these loans where. Their, you know, business may have been impacted due to the drought.
And they're non-ag related?
Yeah, it's like non-ag or, um, sorry, sorry, not, not ag, uh, non-farm.
Non-farm?
But it can be like a co-op, um, but, so just non-farm. But small businesses, um, and their loans up to two million, two million dollars to help. Offset the economic impacts of the drought, so. Uh, they can apply through the SBA for these loans. The lo- the interest rates at like, I think, depending on the loan between like one point eight and. Two and a half percent, so they're significantly, significantly lowered than, you know, regular rates.
They are now.
Yeah. So, I don't know what other, is maybe, so like it gives examples of nur- like a nursery if there's. Plants and whatnot, but I don't know. I guess maybe some of the smaller. Businesses.
I don't, I don't know that we have any. Well, we've got some of these, oh, I don't, I.
The hard thing too is they have to be able to show economic.
Yeah.
And I'm like, the, with, the lake's been, you know, so popular over the, even with the drought.
Yeah.
We got, we got, uh, a couple, I know one business that was impacted a hundred percent. And he was gonna try and have a, a new business and he was gonna have his doors open in June he was hoping for. And he never opened the all summer because of parts and just the COVID, COVID thing and not being able to get product.
Yeah.
And. He would be a really good candidate for something like that.
Um, yeah, I, I wondered about. Uh, some of our raspberry producers as well. I know, um, uh, I think the Floyd suffered, you know, their. Really because of the drought the year before, um, you know, their, their production, I think, was, was less than normal, I think. I don't, I don't know, we can mention that to him and see if there's something that he, you know, if he could use.
Pretty much all the raspberry people took a hit, didn't they?
Yeah.
I can email this, press release to you guys and then if you guys.
Yeah, why don't you?
Distribute it.
Okay.
Isn't, is it, uh, is your guys' email, isn't it allwest.com is that?
That's just me.
Oh, that's just you.
Sims is Yahoo, John's is, what's yours, John?
Mine's my own, through dot bar.
Do you want, you guys wanna just maybe type in your email there and we'll just forward that to you guys?
I think you've got my email, Chandler.
Forward it out, like you guys distribute it. But, and then I guess, update on Washington, they're voting. I just checked, they're voting right now for speaker, they. Failed, uh, on the fifth vote, so they actually just nominated, uh. Um, Donalds, he's an African-American guy.
Oh, really?
Now it's, um, they said it's history, it's two, the two candidates right now are McCarthy and then Jeffries and then this third candidate. So, but, we'll see what happens with the speaker race.
Kevin McCarthy lost with the fourth vote of the Speaker of the House.
Yeah.
That's from KSL, of course, that was forty minutes ago, so.
Yeah, so now they're, they're expecting a, a fifth vote today.
There's the.
Okay.
My name, I didn't put my name.
Here, do you want to put her? Thanks.
So, sorry Chandler, what was your last name?
Beutler, B-E-U-T-L-E-R.
And you were Senator Romney's office, uh, Salt Lake or?
Uh, Ogden.
He's the northern region.
Yeah, northern Utah. Okay, just send that out to you guys.
And then do you have my contact information in case you wanna be on the agenda again?
Yeah, let, let me write it down here. Okay.
So I'm Adelisa Peert and it's, it's spelled A-N-N-E-L-I-E-S-A.
And you said Pierce?
Peert, P-E-A-R-T. And so my email is A-Peart.
Okay.
At richcountyut.org.
Awesome. Yeah, I think I called and talked to you the other day, trying to figure out when the, when the swearing again was gonna happen and stuff, that was, that was me on the phone.
Um, we'll probably be in Washington, I imagine, in the middle of March, or in the middle of February. So we'll.
Yeah, let me know.
Probably stop back and.
I can get you on this calendar to meet with Senator Romney.
Maybe we'll have Kathy take us on a.
Get her to take you on tour?
Take us on a tour somewhere.
You gotta get up in the, the dome up there.
We did.
I'm sure you guys have done that, yeah.
We've been right to the top.
That's, that's a cool.
Yeah, it was.
Puff puff up in the narrow stairs.
I know, they're not made for big guys. I, we were in, uh, Hyrum Dam this summer and it was built in the forties. I mean, yeah, the stairway's this narrow and it's like this high, I'm punching over walking through there.
I heard that that's quite a little, you don't, you don't wanna have, be, be very much, you don't wanna have claustrophobia.
No, I was, we had about thirty people in there and it's, it's one way and then it deadens in this big room.
Yeah.
Just like, man, there's one way in and one way out of there.
We did, uh, went to the brag meeting in Brigham City and they took us up in the. Top of the courthouse or whatever, the bell, where the bell is and stuff. That's little narrow wood. Steps to get up in there too.
Yep, good stuff. Is there anything we can help with you guys with, what's?
How's the, how's the wildfire commission going?
Yeah, thanks for that.
Been a lot of meetings.
Two a week.
Two a week?
Mm-hmm. Every Tuesday at noon and every Thursday at noon for two hours, Zoom meetings. And, uh, next week, week after next, um, two, well, three days in Denver. Um, for three full commission meetings in Denver and then, um. The timeline's pushing them pretty hard, you know, and so, um, there's, everybody's on two different work groups, so. I'm on landscapes and, uh, and post-fire reclamation, um, those are my two groups that I'm on. So landscapes is on Tuesday, post-fire is on Thursday. And then, uh, and then we have, once a month, we have a full commission Zoom meeting with all the, the full commission and talk about. What each of the groups are doing, um, and then, um, so we got DC and, or excuse me, uh. Denver in, uh. Um, and then, um, so we got DC and, or excuse me, uh, Denver in, uh, in two weeks. And then, in June, um, they're gonna have the full commission meeting again and pretty much have everything wrapped up.
That's the wrap up, is that in Salt Lake or?
I don't, they haven't decided. I mean, they've been, they've been telling us for, I don't know, a month or month and a half, you know, um, you know, set this, these dates aside in, in January and it's like, okay, so we set them aside and it's kinda like, well, we don't know. We don't know, we don't know, and it's kinda like Christmas comes and it's kinda like, you guys got any clue? Well, we've decided we're gonna finally have it in Denver and it's kinda like, it's two weeks away, guys. It was, I don't know, it's, you know, it's so diverse and there's so many. It, it is, it is an experience unlike that I've ever had, let me just put it that way. Um, you know, it's, uh, cause you've got a lot of experts and they are very opinionated on their opinions and what, what works and what don't. And, uh, you know.
Keeping them in check though?
Well.
Letting them what it's, what it's really like.
You know, that's, that's the thing, you know, everybody's got their own thing, you know, whether it's air quality or, you know, um, you know, the endangered species or, you know, um, manageable fire versus wildfire and, you know, um, and then we got the tribes, you know, and how you deal with cultural burning with the tribes. And, you know, I, it's kind of interesting to learn about how different tribes do different fires, um, for different ceremonies. Um, some of them up to like fifty acres, they'll have a fire on their reservation and, and it's, and it's not about, it's not about, uh, thinning the timber or, or doing any type of mitigation, it's about a ceremony.
Cultural ceremony.
Yeah, it's a cer- a cultural ceremony. So those are pretty interesting about how, um, you know, and one of the things about the whole deal is, is, you know, the air quality. That comes into every discussion there is, whether, you know, you do, you know, uh, mitigation by fire or, or even, you know, some of the timber rehab stuff of logging or, or, uh, um, the, the biomass and all that. And, and, uh, it's, it's a very interesting thing, you know, it's, like I said, it's something so, it's something that's so very diverse.
Yeah.
And, uh, and it's pretty intense, I mean, those, those discussions are pretty intense. So, it's, it's quite an experience. A little bigger commitment than I thought it was gonna be, let me just put it that way.
Well, you're the man for the job.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but.
So, you've only had one in-person meeting, is that right?
I went in Salt Lake, yep.
So then this will be the second.
And they actually only had, they were only gonna do one in Salt Lake to kick it off and one somewhere else, um, to end it. But somewhere in the middle, well after the Salt Lake one, they said, you know, we need to get together as a full commission. You know, one-on-one and, um, and spend a couple more days as we halfway through that. And, and they, they agreed, they, they decided to do that, but it took them a while to figure out the location, the where to have it. Cause it, it's gotta be a, a, a location of, cause they had it, the emergency management center down in Salt Lake, which was great. Um, they had access, people could zoom in and they had all, everybody could be online and, cause a lot of the stuff you're doing, as you have different discussions, you actually do votes online or on your phone, you know, how, do you agree with this or do you disagree with this? Or, so when they come up with different points, um, then you do voting by electronic voting. And, uh, and then they, you know, it, it's automatically up on the screen of disagree or, you know, you're neutral or you strongly agree. So they have an idea of what direction, which, it's, it's great, I mean, it's, it works really well, but it's, it's a-
I guess that's probably the only way you can really get that many people to, you know, strongly agree, to kind of narrow things down.
Well, and that's, that's, that's the thing, I mean, they're, what they're trying to do is find some compromise with everybody.
Yeah.
That, that Congress can say, this is a bipartisan, everybody, you know, regardless and, and you know, and, and I have to say, it's been really interesting because there's not been any politics brought up at all.
Really?
Zero. It's, it's all been about what is the best thing to do, regardless of whether you're, you know, you're Democrat, you're Republican, who you are. Um, it just, that politics doesn't play into it, it's like, how are we gonna stop, you know, communities from burning down?
Yeah.
You know, and how are we gonna, you know, these tinderboxes of all these dead trees and everything else of how are we gonna mitigate that before it gets into something we can't control and, and, uh, but then again, you know, well, air quality, when can we do that? What's the best time of the year? What about endangered species? When we do these burns, uh, you know, what's it gonna affect and, and all these things? And then, you know, aviation, that's a big one. Because almost all the aircraft, even though it's owned by other, by contractors that the Forest Service and BLM contract with, a lot of this stuff is World War II stuff, that they can't even get parts for anymore. And, and the problem with that whole thing is, is they can't afford to go buy new airplanes every year when they're only using them.
Yeah.
You know, for, you know, some years, very little and other years, quite a bit. Um, but, you know, there's the fire season and when the fire season's open, it sits for nine months or, you know, six months or whatever. And, you know, you bought a four or five or fifty million dollar airplane, you know, how do you pay for that?
Yeah.
So, a lot, and a lot of these guys are retiring, these old, these old pilots that were world, you know, that were war pilots that kept their band-aided, you know, they, they've showed several examples of how, you know, um, I mean, I, I wouldn't, to be honest with you, some of those, those, uh, retired airplanes, I wouldn't get in them at this point in time where they show how they've riveted them together with the amount of weight they have, you know, and the stress on them and all that kinda stuff. It's just, and they're old, you know?
Crazy.
Fifties, you know, some of them were, were, you know, they were in the fifties and they've been remodeled and you can only do so much before, you know.
It's just an old aircraft.
And they, and they have these, that's the other thing, so if you're a, if you're, if you're in aviation, if you're, if your plane is, is for, you know, fire control and fire suppression, then there's a whole nother level of standards from FAA, it's kinda like, it'll fly, put it in the air. But it, it's been very interesting, but it's, it's a good process. I, I think there'll be some things come out of it, the biggest thing is probably gonna be, uh, some funding to try to, nu- number one, um, get NEPA and, um, CADAX exclusions, um, done quicker so that it's not, you can identify an area for, of, of landscape that can be, um, you know, whether it's a, a, a burn or whether it's a timber harvest or whatever it is. So those aren't two and three and four years down the road. It's kinda like, let's identify this right now, get the permit within the next twelve to months or so and, and get this done.
Just expedite.
Yeah, yeah, so there's some suggestions there about how to do that, um, but everything else plays into that, you know, of, you know, how, how can you do that that doesn't just blow up the whole process? And it's good, it's a good thing, it's been very educational and, like I said, a whole different, it's a whole different dynamic. You know, when you're, when you're the only elected official on, on the whole deal, um, it's quite a dynamic.
Well, thanks for doing it. Yeah, we'll have to, so how was, what's, how's the final report gonna come together, like told you that, is it?
Yeah, so, uh, after our last meeting, um, which will be in, um, June, I believe it is. After that last meeting, everything will be put together and, uh, that final report will be presented and I believe it has to be presented by the first of September.
Okay.
I believe so. And so, once that final meeting is done, all the, all the stuff is put together and, and what Congress can actually do, what the recommendations will be to Congress that they can actually do to help the whole process all the way along, uh, will be presented, um, I, I'm guessing by, well, I'm not really sure who, who will actually be presenting the report, but I'm guessing probably the moderators, I'm guessing, that have gone through that whole thing, so.
It's exciting, that's cool.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to see how it all comes out.
It's gonna be helpful, really helpful.
Yeah, I'm hoping so, I'm hoping it'll, uh, you know, um, untie some, untie some knots that have been tied that make it very difficult to do, make, make decisions that, you know, um, and, and hopefully there's some, some situations where areas could be looked at for shared stewardship. Um, you know, whether it's private land, BLM land, state land, Forest Service land. And they can look at an entire landscape there and work together and do some mitigation, um, to prevent a whole watershed or a community or whatever it might be.
Well, and they can, you know, look, come and look at Utah and look at that and look at how that partnership is.
Yeah, that's what I said too, I, I said, we've got a couple of really good examples of where that's gone on. Down in Beaver County for one, or one, uh, particular canyon down there that they've done, so, yeah, it's good, good thing.
Any, anything else we can do for Rich County?
Um, well, we'll just keep your ear to the ground for money, we still need some money for that canal over there in, in the Garden City area.
Okay.
Um.
That was over the summer, right, when we were up here at the brag?
Yeah.
Was it an excavator that took out the bank or something?
Well, yeah, they, they ex-
Got too close to it?
Got too close to it and the bank slid away from the canal, but, you know, for the, for the safety of the whole community over there and really for water conservation, if, if we could get, you know, the majority of that canal in a, in a pressurized pipe, that would be number one. Cause those communities, I mean, all that, almost all that development there in Garden City is all below the canals. I mean, regardless of where it's at, it's almost all below.
Sometimes you're gonna ruin, it's just gonna flood everything.
Yeah, you know, and there's enough water there during the summertime, well, and even now, you know, um, we have another really, really warm rain and it melts all that snow, it's gotta come down and, you know, it'll just run right through and across the top and, I don't know. Anyway, we're still looking for some funding, we did get some, um, we did get some funding, the irrigation company got some funding to put a pipe in where it was compromised, um, it was a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar loan from Water. Oh, I'm trying to think, water conserva- it was a water conservation type thing and they, they expedited their-
The, the state should be getting some funding through for their revolving water, you know, funding through infrastructure bill.
Yeah.
Go through the state, but I'll talk to the region EPA and see if they would have any federal grants that would potentially qualify for it.
Well, you know, one of the things is, is we can probably do a study that shows the need, but it's gonna be eight or ten years long, I mean, that's the thing, in order to, to generate the information that, that's, to substantiate the, the type of project that needs to be done, this, this long-term deal of year after year after year and information and data and everything else, and it's kinda like, that's great, so what do we do for the next ten years? You know, so, that, that's a real, that, that's a solution, that's a situation we've got to address. I mean, it's not, not really on the county level, it's an irrigation company level and, and mostly the city level cause it runs right through the city, the biggest part of it, um, that, that's where the danger is. So, um, they're looking at that as well, but anyway, if you hear of anything or, you know, pass, pass that along. Um, you know, we had to double the assessments on all the, on all the shareholders and, you know, that, that hurts when, you know, um, it, they were pretty high anyway and then when you turn around and double them, because the canal bank went bad, you know, I mean, some will see the benefits, some won't.
Yeah, that's too bad.
So, anyway.
Well, thanks guys for-
Well, thanks for, no, thanks for filling us in, thanks for making the trip.
Yeah, I'm glad the trip home's getting better.
All right, well, I don't see anything else or anything else, we don't have al- anything else on the agenda. Um, let's just go ahead and adjourn for lunch and, uh, come back at, uh, let's be back here at ten minutes to one and then, um, we can get Ben and get him soon.
Okay, I'll convene our commission meeting for January fourth back to order. And our first item of business will be the swearing in of our county attorney. So we will turn that time over to our county clerk and our county attorney to be sworn in.
Okay. I've had.
I've been doing this quite a bit lately.
Yeah, and I I've had them state their name, that's what their clerk did, so I'll just do that.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, here's your hand please. I state your name.
I, Ben Willoughby.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey.
That I will support, obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you, thanks.
I guess you of all people would know where it's signed.
Great, thank you.
Hi, did I spell your name right, right there?
Ah, you did.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Well, it looks like our first item of business will be to have a public hearing on the ordinance of providing control of noxious weeds within Rich County. So I will open the public hearing in for any public comment about this ordinance that the county is reviewing and with a proposal to adopt. And I'll ask our county attorney to basically just give us a synopsis of what the ordinance says and any changes that he may have made from our previous hearings.
Quick question, I missed who reviewed and presented for public hearing. Did you do a motion to open public hearing?
I didn't, I just opened it, you know, where we have it as a time circuit.
Then you don't have to commit any paperwork.
Okay, well, so the first, this is an ordinance that we looked at, I think it was back in November, we discussed. And we are amending this just because time has kind of made our ordinance out of date. And so, let me give you each, this is the master copy, so mark up that one. Job done, copy there.
Thank you.
So. I heard that talking about the weed board and that affects this, so there have been some changes to the, it's Title Four of the Utah Code, was last amended in two thousand nineteen, it's called the Utah Noxious Weed Act. And so what this ordinance does, it creates, our old ordinance appointed a weed control supervisor, who's kind of like the on the ground person who, you know, the boots on the ground. And it referenced, the old ordinance referenced a noxious weed control board, but it didn't actually create or address the board. And so this one remedies that. So the first thing it does defines noxious weed as broadly as possible, just to match whatever the annual noxious weed list that the state of Utah puts out. Section two creates the county weed control board. Gives them all the powers and responsibilities and duties that state law gives them. Section three, it establishes the position of the county weed control supervisor. That goes on and gives them all the powers, duties and responsibilities that are set out in state code. Section four declares noxious weeds to be a nuisance. That sets out a kind of a procedural framework where if the board determines that a particular property requires prompt and definite action to prevent control, to prevent or control noxious weeds, the board can serve the owner or the person in possession of the property a notice. Specifically, or specify what action is required to be taken. One notice is sufficient during a calendar year. The notice will prescribe what needs to be done about it, whether it is tillage, cropping, chemicals or livestock. And then if the person and the timing that is required to take that action. If the owner or person in possession of the property fails to take the action at a specified time, then it declares that to be a nuisance. Which gives the county authority to abate it. In section five, if the person fails to abate the nuisance, five days after the deadline is passed, the county, through the county weed control supervisor can abate the nuisance. And then bill the landowner the costs of abatement. Section five B sets out the procedure for recouping costs, where the notices are supposed to go, how many days to seek it. Essentially, if the person doesn't pay, ninety days after the date of demand, it becomes a charge against on property tax, just like a delinquent property tax would be. Section six sets out a request for hearing, so somebody can appeal both the notice that the board, that the county weed control board gave them. And that appeal would come to this board, the Board of Commissioners. And section seven states that the county weed supervisor is to be given access to property, canals, everywhere he needs to go to inspect for noxious weeds that need to be remediated. And lastly, section nine, the penalty. State law declares all nuisances to be a class B misdemeanor. And here we just record that in section nine, that if you receive a notice to abate noxious weeds on property and fail to do so, if the failure is willful, then it could be considered a class B misdemeanor handled in our justice courts. Any questions about any of that? Nothing was changed from my notes of our last meeting in November, but.
Okay. I don't know that we have any questions from the public. Is there anyone in the chat, John, that you may know of?
Doesn't look like.
Okay. With that, with no questions from the public or any more questions, I will close the public hearing for the control of noxious weed ordinance. And we are back into our public hearing and the official commission meeting to take action. So I guess the action would be to make a motion to approve the ordinance that's been presented to us as a county weed ordinance. O twenty-three dash one.
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance for the control of noxious weeds within the county, O twenty-three dash one.
Upgrading it from, what, nineteen eighty to two thousand twenty-three?
Probably.
I second that motion.
Did you have to put that in there?
Yeah.
Okay, motion second, I'll pay respect. All right. All right, let's move on to our next public hearing then. Of the prohibiting the pollution of any waters within the unincorporated areas of Rich County. So I will open the public hearing to the public as we discuss this ordinance, so I'll turn the turn the time over to the county attorney to explain the ordinance.
Okay, great. Okay, so this one also, we discussed together back in November or October, I think it was November. And so there are two things to remember here. One, back in twenty eighteen, the state required us to pass a drinking water source protection ordinance, which protects any sources of drinking water. That's not this. That's two thousand eighteen, that one is still unchanged. What we had is an ordinance from nineteen sixty-nine that.
It goes back to sixty-nine.
Still has Bill's signature on it. No.
No, I know how old he was in sixty-nine, I know that's not right.
No, it doesn't. That is not, that is not true.
It does actually have Sim Weston, is that?
That's Uncle Sim.
Is that your uncle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I was old enough to sign it.
Yeah. Okay, so since then, the topic of polluting general waters in the state has just been completely taken over by state law. Hundreds of pages here. So the decision was made that we would keep ordinance, but just bring it to be consistent with state law. I, looks like I neglected to bring copies for everybody. Do you have a master copy?
I do, right here, yeah.
So let me just go through it, it's a very short proposed ordinance, it's about a page and a half of text. It defines pollution using the exact same definition in state law, which is any man-made or man-induced alteration of the chemical, physical, biological or radiological integrity of the waters of the state. That defines waters to be any stream, lake, pond, marsh, water course, waterway, spring, irrigation system, canals, or any other body of water accumulation, natural, artificial, public or private in Rich County. or any other body of water accumulation, uh, natural, artificial, public, or private in Rich County. And it excludes from waters, um, bodies of water confined to or retained within limits of private property, so long as the water does not, uh, develop into or constitute a threat to public waters. So if, if a private landowner was to have, um, a private pond or something that doesn't leach into public waters, that does not cons- be considered water. And then it just, uh, prohibits, uh, both pollution of public waters in the county or placing pollution in a way that it is, um, that there's probable cause to believe that it will, uh, leach into public waters. Uh, it declares, um, um, doing so to be a public nuisance. It, uh, gives the camp, the local health department, um, the authority to enter into, uh, property to abate that nuisance. Um, it declares that, um, uh, that all nuisances are considered a public emergency if it's water pollution. And, um, it allows the, uh, local health department not only to abate the nuisance, but to charge the owner of the premises for the cost of abatement, and then it repeals our nineteen sixty-nine ordinance. So, you remember, there's not a lot left to do when state law is so thorough here. There aren't any, um, the only thing I could find that we do is, uh, to declare it to be, uh, an emergency and a public nuisance, allowing quick action to abate water pollution. Any questions about that one?
Yeah, where the state basically took all the.
Hundreds of pages, yeah.
Yeah, took all of it.
It took me a long time to come through.
Okay, any public comment or, uh, anything you need to ask or wanna ask or any clarifications you want?
I get, uh, I, if we aren't as strict as the state ones, then we abide by them anyway. We can only go more strict, right?
I mean, you're looking for areas where they didn't address, um, and there's something for us to fill. Uh, you're looking for areas in state code where it gives some discretion to counties, and, and here there are none. Or, um, or we can match them. Um, the biggest, you remember, our old ordinance made it a class B misdemeanor to pollute waters. Under state law now, that is like a third degree felony.
Early.
Um, you know, maybe a, maybe a second degree felony in some circumstances. And so it didn't make sense anymore to address, try to address this in our justice courts. It's a district court matter, so. But this is a nice little ordinance that harmonizes with state law and should last for a long time.
Okay, with that, I will, uh, adjourn out of the public hearing, close the public hearing. And we're back into regular commission meeting, um, for action on this ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, update the Rich County ordinance regarding pollution of any waters. And from nineteen sixty-nine to the new version today.
Second that motion?
Have a motion in a second to approve the new ordinance, uh, regarding pollution of any waters. Zero two-three dash two, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, voting those unanimously. All right, um, and then we'll go to a public hearing for our beer licensing and regulation, um, that we need to update. So I'll open the public hearing to review the proposed, uh, ordinance change and, uh, turn the time over to our county attorney.
Okay, so this is a public, the last of the three that we addressed in November, um, was the proposed amendments. The county has an ordinance that is, uh, regarding, um, beer sales. Um, anytime that you're selling beer to be consumed off premises. Um, this is another area where state law is, uh, incredibly thorough, but there are a couple instances where state law gives counties a little discretion. Um, so the first, in November, we talked about, um, in state law, it gives government, um, heavily regulates alcoholic beverages, which is defined into two categories. There's beer, um, and, which is a product containing uh, between point five and four percent alcohol. And then there's liquor, which is, uh, all the things that you would think of besides beer. So beer and liquor. It allows, um, so independent of what Rich County does, um, all alcohol beverage sellers will still be highly regulated from the state alcohol control board. They have to get licenseings through them, but state law allows, um, the county to also require a secondary local license, which is the only way that a county can retain some ability to regulate this, is by requiring a local license. Um, and so, um, that's the first thing that this ordinance does, is, um, um, it requires a local, uh, special business license to sell alcoholic beverages, um, to be consumed on premise.
So, that did the old one also, right?
In the old one, it did it just for beer, uh, so this one does it for beer and liquor.
Oh, okay.
Um, so the first thing it would do is it would require anybody selling alcohol to be consumed on premise. Um, um, would have to get a special liquor license, so that would exclude grocery stores, um, you know, maybe a Seven-Eleven, where you're not consuming it, they're on the premise, those would still be regulated by the state. Uh, the license that they get shall identify specifically the premises covered thereby, um, and shall be displayed conspicuously on the premise. Uh, requires a separate local license for each premise. Um, and all licenses are conditioned on licensee's compliance with the conditions that, uh, the board of commissioners set when they reply for the license. Uh, it sets out an application process, that they file it with the county clerk, um, state, um, the identity of who's applying, uh, clearly articulate the request, the proposal. That the county clerk shall refer the application to the sheriff for inspection of the proposed premise, premises, and report back. In our November meeting, he was determined to take out the requirement to get the health department involved, um, for this license, so it does not refer it there. Uh, the sheriff makes a report back regarding the, uh, the suitability of the premises, the general reputation and character of the persons who habitually frequent such places, uh, the nature and kind of the business conducted at such place, uh, and whether, uh, business at the place has been conducted in a lawful, quiet, orderly manner, uh, the nature and kind of entertainment offered at the place, and the proximity to any school or church. Uh, and that sheriff would then make a report back to the board of county commissioners, who would then ultimately decide whether to issue the license. In November, we decided, uh, to set the fee at two hundred and fifty dollars, um, for an annual, and at a hundred and fifty dollars for a, a seasonal or ninety, uh, permit up to ninety days, like for a special event. And then, uh, section four states, uh, under renewal, any license granted under this ordinance shall expire one year after it's granted, unless it was for a shorter period that it was granted, and then the person has to, uh, reapply each year. It allows periodic inspection by the sheriff to make sure that there's compliance. And then, uh, it declares a nuisance, uh, anyone who is operating a business selling alcohol to be consumed on premises, who is not in compliance with, um, the conditions of the, of the license. It allows the board of county commissioners to suspend or evoke a license for violation. It makes violation, um, of the ordinance a class B misdemeanor. And then lastly, it repeals our old ordinance, which was from, uh, nineteen eighty-two. So, basically, uh, it is designed to give, uh, Rich County not only local control, but as much local control as the state law allows.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns about that?
Not some things that we'll deal there very often, but we do have now, uh, a, uh, an ordinance that we can refer to if we so desire to, to pass that as our ordinance.
I think we talked about that it was just the golf course.
Yeah.
That consume aqua in the cafes.
Yeah.
So, we probably already have an ordinance, or already have a license.
They do.
Well, and I figured it would be like if we ever get any sporting events, like, an, a, a mountain biking competition or something, and they want that venue or whatever.
Maybe a rodeo that wants to sell alcohol on the grounds, or a concert. Yeah, those there, we need it.
Okay, say, all right.
Do you have a master copy there?
I, I do. All right, I'll close the public hearing and we'll convene back into our commission meeting, um, for, uh, the action on our, uh, ordinance regarding beer and liquor regulation.
Okay, I'll make a motion, do we accept this ordinance, uh, O twenty-three dash three, uh, regarding beer and liquor regulations?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right. So, um, looks like we need, uh, do we have an interlocal agreement that we need to look at between Gard- Garden City and, uh, the county?
Yes, is that the next item?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, Dale contacted me and mentioned that they have negotiated to get an extra deputy with some financial assistance from Garden City. Is that something that?
Yes.
Any bit was involved with?
Yes.
I wasn't involved with it, but, um, and then they've been working with the Garden City attorney, um, to draw up the appropriate agreement. The, my base, my understanding is, is that Garden City will pay fifty thousand dollars a year. In exchange, we'll hire a new deputy and then, um, we'll make some periodic reports back to Garden City about how many citations and how much law enforcement was out in the city.
Time spent there.
Time spent, and I think the idea is that there would be a little bit more time in Garden City. So, uh, let me, um, I emailed a copy of this, it's, but I didn't bring a hard copy today, so I can just kinda go through my one copy. Okay, so, uh, basically, um, anytime there's cooperation between two entities, the best way to do it is through an interlocal agreement, um, which will enact by a resolution. Uh, so going through this interlocal agreement, um, let's see.
Is this a, a resolution, and I need to print it out?
I have a copy here.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the county agrees to furnish all necessary law enforcement services to reasonably protect the residents and visitors of Garden City, and to reasonably enforce the state criminal statutes and regulations in the ordinance of Garden City, within the corporate limits of the town of Garden City. Um, in addition, the municipal type law enforcement services provided under this agreement, they include animal control, routine patrol, crime investigation, responding to service, community policing, and public policing, parades, and special public events. Um, it, uh, states that control over, uh, the deputy obviously remains with, uh, the county sheriff. That, uh, Garden City does not provide any equipment, uh, that the deputy is not considered a Garden City employee. Um, Garden City is not responsible for workers' comp. Uh, both sides indemnify each other. Uh, section nine, uh, the county shall maintain at a minimum the following records and provide, uh, monthly reports of those records to Garden City. The number of calls or types of services, uh, B, the number and types of citations, uh, C, the number and types of warnings, and D, the number of hours and services provided. I talked to Dale to see how burdensome that would be to him, and he says he's, uh, already doing that.
Yes.
Um, let's see, uh, reasonable cooperation between the two. It requires them to pay fifty thousand dollars, uh, annually, uh, by June thirtieth of each year. That's a number that we just pulled out of the air, but does that seem to work?
Yeah.
Seems fine. That the agreement will be effective upon signing of both parties, uh, the county attorney, or the city attorney for Garden City hasn't noticed up in the next week or so, so it should be done quickly. Term, uh, it is a, um, one-year term, but it renews automatically each year unless either party provides the other written, ninety days of written notice to terminate it. So it just goes year to year, which is a nice way, I think, to, to do interlocal agreements. Um, if either party is in default, they'll send written notice to the other side. The other side will have thirty days to cure it before it is considered a breach of the contract. And.
So if nothing's done, it will just continue.
If, if neither Garden City or the county act, we will expect fifty thousand dollars every June.
Yeah.
And they'll continue to, and.
It's not something we have to haggle out every year.
No. Um, let's see, there's some boring stuff about severability and waiver which, you won't go through unless you care. And, uh, that's it. So, any questions about that?
Okay, so there, you've developed this with their attorney?
They reviewed it and their mayor has reviewed it.
Okay.
So, uh, the, the procedural way to enact this is, um, to enact, to pass a resolution. Um, and the resolution just states, you know, where is it's in their interest, and where is it's in our interest. Uh, therefore we wanna enter into this interlocal, and therefore you authorize, uh, signature of the agreement, which the chairman would then sign.
So this doesn't tie one specific deputy to, we just keep track of all hours from the sheriff's department?
Right, how much time is, it could be.
Which we're probably way far above.
Yeah. Nothing about like leaving a deputy in the town, just the idea, I think, is that if, and that's why they're not paying for a full deputy. Because it's gonna cost us to equip, benefits, train.
Yeah. Okay.
Way more than fifty thousand, but the idea is if there's more deputies, Garden City would incrementally benefit.
Yeah.
So, uh, this is the resolution, uh, which you would need to vote on today.
Here can be another. So R twenty-three dash one.
And there's the master copy of the.
R what?
R twenty-three dash one.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution to approve an interlocal agreement for law enforcement service, uh, for and with Garden City.
Okay, second that motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve the resolution, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, voting unanimously.
Resolution number R twenty-three dash one.
Is that why I cut you off, is the resolution number? I was just making sure.
Yeah. Do you sign this one or?
Uh, apparently. All right, and then we need a, uh, we'll need a motion to sign the interlocal agreement, correct?
No, that authorizes the chairman to sign, so then you'll sign there.
And they're, they've seen all this and they're good with it, huh?
Uh, their mayor has seen it and approved it. I made some changes and they approved the changes.
Okay.
Okay. And then, oh, perfect. And then Annalisa, will you get me copies of everything we do today that's fully signed? All the ordinances, the resolutions, and the interlocal agreement? And then I'll get that to Garden City.
All right, and our last thing would be, uh, the bylaws, amending the bylaws for the economic development advisory board.
Fortunately, I have three more things.
What? Are they on here?
Yeah.
All right.
I drove too far to knock, there are three things to.
All right, so what, what is the, what, what?
All right, so what's the next item? Is it the bylaws?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay, so, um, speaking of boards that are established, uh, the county, for only about two years, has had an econo- economic development board. Um, it, uh, the state through their, uh, statutes, uh, set up this program for camp. it uh the state through their uh statutes uh set up this program for camp- uh rural county grants and then requir- required counties to create an economic development board to participate. And then um inside of two years, they completely gutted that act. Um and um so that requires some changes on our part as well. So they still have the program, uh I think it's called the Go Utah Board. Uh that still runs a rural county grant program and it's between uh two hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars each year. And we still, if we wanna have businesses participate, the county still has to have a board. But it's no longer called the Economic Development Board. It's now called the County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. Which apparently the old name didn't last two years, but this name is much better. Um so we, so if we wanna participate, which it seems like we would, um
So I'm gonna, sorry to interrupt. What what are we calling it now? I didn't, I can't see it on your email.
County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. And so I have some copies for you here. So this is the redline version. Um Okay, so we'll just go through this together. Um so this is the ordinance that we, or this is the um the bylaws that we went through um
Three years ago.
It was what, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty? It wasn't long ago. So uh underlined are additions and uh the the middle is out. So we changed the name of the board to the Community Economic Opportunity Advisory Board or uh CEO Board. Um article two, um it just makes the changes. It's it's now the Go Utah Office. It's a different statute. No real changes there. Um let's see, let's get to article three, membership. Uh the board has the same membership, has to have a minimum of five. It can have more if if the Board of County Commissioners wants. Um let's see, term, uh this is a change. Our old one um was a one-year term for appointment. And so presumably every member of our Community Economic Development Board, their term has lapsed unless I hadn't seen any reappointments happening. Okay. So the new uh statute allows a four-year term, which seems uh better. I mean, you can always remove somebody if they're not doing their job or for any kind of malfeasance or just because even. But to have a four-year term seems better. So this makes it a four-year appointment. Um the state statute, uh that line underneath there, it says it is encouraged that appointment will be limited to two consecutive terms. That's uh pursuant to the state code. And then the next paragraph that begins, the Board of County Commissioners will, at the time of appointment, adjust the length of terms to ensure that the terms of CEO Board members are staggered so that approximately half the appointed members are appointed every two years. So when you make appointments to this new board, you're gonna wanna do half of them as two-year appointments and half as four-year appointments. Uh section three, attendance, that did not change. Uh four didn't change, five didn't change. Uh meetings, article four, um uh just clarifies that CEO Board meetings are subject to the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. Um no other real change there.
They're supposed to be held monthly?
Um
Do we have to hold them monthly?
Board must shut down. I don't even remember where that came from.
Okay, just section, article four, section
We don't do that.
You don't do that. There's no real reason to do that either. Like why would you, what would you do in March?
We'll all get in trouble, I guess.
You haven't even put in any, you haven't even solicited applications in March. Um
We do it about every quarterly probably.
I think that
Is that about we
We're fine just leaving that and not doing it? Okay.
Nobody's gonna come calling and demanding much CEO Board. If they have business, they can do it. If they don't have business, they won't. Um let's see, notice of meetings. Again, I just ma- made it more clear that they are, it is a public body, uh compliant with Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. Uh article five, member responsibilities. Um I just took out, which is currently set eight hundred thousand because that changes, but it just tells them that we should try to approve applications up to the max, whatever it is that year. Very minor change. Um let's see, article six, this is the big one, uh no, that's not the big one. Officers, no real change there. Um Article seven um is the, is a big change, the conflict of interest. So the current um guidance from the Go Utah Office states the number right here. That says uh CEO Board members um are expected to abide by ethics and governance and conflict of interest practices, which is um not a lot of guidance there. So then I went to uh every per- part of the um code where I could find requirements about conflict of interest and I tried to incorporate them um you know, for instance, uh for a legislator um um who's voting on a contract for the state, uh they are not allowed to vote um if they have a um any interest in the profits or benefits of the state contract and even makes uh the vote a class B misdemeanor, which seemed um that seemed probably the safest and best analogy to apply to this. So um this is the proposed language. Um section one, conflicts of interest, uh the CEO Board may not recommend any grant funds to an entity where a CEO Board member has a financial interest. So if, the idea there is that um it's just trying to make it as uh safe as possible um that um that um there wouldn't be any uh any possibility of a conflict of interest. It then defines financial interest to mean that the member has directly or indirectly through business, investment, or immediate family one of the following three things. One, an ownership or investment interest uh in the entity seeking grants. Or that the board member um has a compensation agreement with any entity or individual seeking grant funds. Or three, a potential ownership or investment interest or compensation arrangement uh with any entity seeking grant funds. Um section two, uh duty to disclose uh remains the same. Um you know, there are other conflicts of interest, like um you'd say like, well, this, you know, my bro- my my brother has a company or something. So it's not a direct or indirect financial interest to the board member and then it would be handled under section two, which is where you disclose it to the rest of the board. Um you you don't vote and you disclose it to uh the Board of County Commissioners, that there's the possibility of a conflict there.
So and it says uh it's in somewhere immediate family. Immediate
Generally defines this like your household in the in the law.
Cause I'm related to lots of people in this county that are on that board, but
Sure. If your cousin or your brother or something, that's not a, that wouldn't be considered a um
I had a cousin the last one and I decl- disclosed it and didn't vote and stuff, but I didn't, I I wanted to s- find out if that was right or not.
So under this proposal, you have two kinds of conflicts. There's financial conflicts where the, under this proposal, the uh the board uh it does not consider applications where a board member has a financial interest. In other words, if you uh you would want a board of people made up of people who don't seek grants.
Right.
Other conflicts that are non-financial would be just handled under the general rules under section two um where you disclose it to the board, like, hey, this is my uncle or my cousin. I'm gonna abstain and then um and then that's it. And now, so you just, you know, the, when it comes up to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, they would say, to make sure the board knows, this is also Sim's uncle. Um but that would not be a knockout for the application for a grant.
Right.
So um there's a lot of wiggle room here because the guidance from the state is pretty slim. It just says compliance with state rule, you know, state uh, what was the language?
Conflict of interest or?
State conflicts of interest and ethics and governance. It's hard to know what that means specifically in this context, but the rule for legislators voting on state contracts seemed kind of the the best. So um and
So after this, we'd probably have to put that CEO Board together from scratch.
Y- yeah, cause everyone you've appointed had a one-year term, so technically right now you don't have even an old board to dispat, to uh disband.
Yeah. Okay.
So it seemed like, you know, start of a new year, it's a great time to um create the new board. So the resolution that I drafted uh did a couple things. Number one, it um establishes the new board, the c- it would be, would should be called the CEO Board. Um two, um it says the C- the C E D Board previously established is replaced with the CEO Board and any appointments to the C E D Board that have not expired are converted to the new CEO Board. But if you don't have any, then you wanna start from scratch.
So none of those are expired. They haven't, none of them have been in old morn for two years and you knew four.
But the four years have changed. Before this, it was a one-year appointment.
Right.
So they all have expired. And
They've expired, but they haven't served longer than two years.
We we were supposed to renew them every year and we haven't renewed them since the initial appointment.
Yeah. Plus, they might not wanna be automatically renewed. This new rule about that you can't apply if you are on the board.
Right.
If I was a business owner, I would have to then decide which thing do I want most.
Yeah, that'll change the composition.
And I would probably choose applying for grants.
And we had two, two had to throw, two of our board through their applications in the garbage because they were on the board.
Which is a reasonable business decision, so I think that
And it cost, it cost them ten thousand bucks to be on our board.
Yeah. So um anyway, that's the proposal, is uh there would be at least five new members, um one of which I think has to be one of you three. Let's see, county representative, that doesn't have to be one of you. A municipality representative, a workforce development representative, private sector representative, and a member of the public within the county. So it doesn't have to be any of, any of the, of this board. But it seems like a good time to create the new CEO Board, give them bylaws, and then put a call out for applications of people who would be willing to serve. Any thoughts or issues?
So you have listed on here and any other members deemed appropriate. So you have more than five, you have actually said.
That comes directly from state statutes. It's a minimum of five.
Minimum of five, okay.
But there's no maximum. So if you wanted someone else on there, you could have more than five, but you have to have at least those five.
We we had two or three well-known, successful businessmen from Garden City last time. I liked that.
Yeah. It's just this new, it's this new state rule uh regarding that conflict of interest that nobody, I mean, how awful would it be for the county and for someone if we accidentally induce somebody to Just better. If you're asking them to be on a board, don't ask them to even get close to to conflict of interest.
That would be true. Yeah. Well, I think it looks good. And it seems like that money's gonna keep coming for a while, so.
Said at least, in statute right now, it's at least two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Right, for every
And then eight hundred if they fund it. So
Eight hundred to small counties?
Yeah.
Hold it count.
I think so. Unless I read it wrong.
To every county, every county gets
Two hundred.
Guaranteed two hundred.
Two hundred.
And you can put in and do a big project and
Oh, that's that tier, tier two or the second tier?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Let's see, it says a rural county may receive um two hundred thousand dollars annually. I'm pretty sure I read that it goes up to eight hundred.
Yeah, eight hundred's a second. If 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 you wanted to just combine everything into a a one, one project.
But that's a competing pot of money above that, two hundred thousand, isn't it?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah, but the two hundred's guaranteed, pretty much.
But it seems like it's not uh, they also have really nice, did they have this for the old board that you guys were on uh on their website? Step-by-step guides about how to do the reporting and how to make the application. It kinda seemed like it was new, but very helpful. So there you go. Um right now, though, we have nothing because the C E D Board is gone from statute and everyone's term is expired.
Okay.
Well, we have resolution R twenty-three dash two, um that's before us. If we're going to adopt that resolution for the bylaws change to the Rich County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board.
Okay, this is, sounds like something we have to do, so I'll make a motion that we accept the Rich County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board bylaws, that resolution. Can we change things?
Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Voting is unanimous. Okay, we got that taken care of.
So here's the resolution. Are you, you have a copy?
Yeah.
And then here are the bylaws. Did you copy that?
Uh no.
Okay. So here's the signature page of that.
These are the cleanup, one of the clean ones, clean ones.
How does it work when you guys go to create a board from scratch? Do you
Honestly, I haven't been involved in one yet.
This was the last one we created.
Was it really?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
So it seems like we'd, we'd need to put a call out for applications, but they also have to be very targeted, like it has to be one from a town.
Yeah, we
It has to be one from
We didn't put any applic- we didn't put, post it.
Yeah, I was just gonna go pick them out.
We handpicked them.
The odds of just putting general applications and getting each of the five slots that you need are very low. And we talk about like if someone involved in what was it, business?
Yeah.
A county representative, I mean
Like Sim said, it's easier just to go find some of the matches that.
A workforce development representative? Who would that even be?
So, well, somebody from workforce. Hard to hear what that is.
So really the only one that um
We we have Brian, have we had Brian?
A member of the public and private sector.
No, Brian's not a workforce.
But he suggested the new person.
It was somebody, yeah, yeah, a new, a new lady that's replaced um the other.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to get on that now right away.
And then uh Annalisa, when that board gets created, will you just make sure you give them a copy of those bylaws?
Yes.
All right, uh what's the next thing? Is it the
Personnel policy.
Personnel, okay. So Personnel, okay, so would we? I guess we can talk about later.
Okay.
Okay, this one, um. Um. Last time I was here, um. You guys asked to have me amend po- uh personnel policy three dash four hundred, which is mileage per diem and other reimbursements. To make it so that part-time employees get fifty percent of a full-time employee's uniform allowance. Right, that's the question.
Okay.
So um here's, I just wrote a proposal. Good job. Bill, this is the master copy. So um let's get past the resolution and then go to the policy. Let me just G dot here for a second. The only thing it changes, um remember we did that, we did the per diem stuff a few months ago. Well, this changes to section five, that last page. Do you wanna just give that paragraph a read?
So what you changed was the very last line.
The very last line.
Part-time employees will be given a uniform allowance of up to fifty percent of an equivalent full-time employee, so that's that's the change you made, right?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the change.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we need too much discussion, do we? We already talked about it, we're on the do it.
So to do that, there's a resolution attached, it's on page one of the packets I gave you.
Okay. Okay, are you ready for a motion, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution to approve updates, Rich County Personnel Policy three hundred, or three dash four hundred.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, to amend the policy, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously and that will be in effect as of today.
Sorry, I missed that, so is that gonna, John, you want me to move?
Yeah.
And that resolution is gonna be R twenty three dash one hundred.
No. Did you have that water?
I know, I've been drinking it. It only, it only happens when I laugh.
So uh Annalisa, will you uh distribute a copy of that new personnel policy and the resolution to each department head?
The only one that will need it would be um. Well, actually the only one that will need it would be the the sheriff. And that probably needs to go here to his uh jail commander, which would be Emily. Cause nobody else is given a uniform allowance, um just the public safety.
Okay.
Sorry, I kinda missed that some of, I I missed some, that some of these resolutions.
Oh, it's okay, I usually bring my own.
No, thanks.
Okay.
All right, so um. Looks like we uh have come to the. Um item on uh for an executive session to discuss the consideration of a settlement for the opioids lawsuit. So I would need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I'm in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Okay.